I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here for a record session of Goldendale City Council for January 17th, 2023. I have, we have one member of the council that is held at work and may not be here, that's Philberto Ontevetos. So we would need a motion to execution.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Philberto Ontevetos from attending this particular Goldendale City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I also want to, well, we don't have, well, do we have any closed public comment as this people would be talking on agenda items only?
Agenda items only, say.
Yeah, I don't, you talk about this public comment for agenda only?
Yeah.
Right.
Those are for the, just the things that are on the agenda, the council business for retention pay or the building official code enforcement planner. It's things that are on this agenda.
Okay, we're gonna speak later, I guess.
And then the, then the public comment at the end is a, a subject that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that tonight.
You're welcome.
Well, the minutes are on the agenda, aren't they?
The minutes for last meeting.
Last meeting, yes.
Is there a change you want to make on those?
Well, I want to talk about it, it's on the agenda, isn't it?
No, it's.
Not on tonight.
This is the agenda, you have a report of the last meeting.
The agenda, the, the agenda for tonight includes approving the minutes from the January 3rd meeting, does it not?
Approval of the minutes, yes. So if there's a change that needed to be inquired on the minutes prior.
Yeah, there is, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Is that you're gonna approve the January 3rd meeting minutes and, and I want to talk about that.
Okay.
We have three minutes, not now, we're still working on that, getting that to that point.
So his, his public comment would be, he wants to talk about the meeting minutes for last.
Well, I'm really glad we made a rule to be able to answer people that are here for agenda items and people who want to talk for the public. Go ahead.
Well, I have one other question regarding the agenda then is, isn't the, isn't there a resolution to approve the?
There's a motion to approve the minutes from last, from last meeting.
I'm moving on, is there, is there a resolution on the agenda to approve the tourism funding?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so you haven't put that to resolution yet?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. So, yeah, you can talk about that.
At the end, I talk about this.
So minutes for January 3rd council meeting do not directly or indirectly cover the topic of my presentation last week, which was mostly about the chamber's lack of accountability for tourism funding paid to them by the city for the years 2017 through 2021. Furthermore, the minutes did not even mention the second topic I brought up regarding the unused budget amounts awarded to the chamber of almost $60,000 during the years of 2017 to 2021. These are the subjects of the presentation, not the chamber's accounting of 2022 as the current minutes portray, nor the chamber's job performance or lack thereof. I think that the, I think that the minutes should note that several council members were completely off topic. The minutes cite that city clerk treasurer Sandy Wells informed Dennis that the current administration does require the chamber give the proof of spending like everybody else. That's a total fabrication of minutes. In reality, in response to my statements that everyone, including the chamber, should have to provide proof of expenses, her exact words were, certainly they do, which is correct, but it is not pertinent to the topic of my presentation, which was the lack of accountability for the years of 2017 through 2021, not 2022. The minutes don't reflect that council members Steve Johnston and Phil understood by points regarding lack of funding receipts from the chamber for the five-year period of 2017 through 2021. They admitted there is a problem. There isn't anything in the minutes regarding the nearly $60,000 of tourism applications budgeted to the chamber that the chamber didn't use during the same five-year period, money that I stated could have been given to other applicants, but instead ended up sitting in the city's coffers rather than promoting tourism. There is nothing in the minutes about that subject. The minutes claim Steve Johnston did not want the city to withhold their wages from the chamber, which is not what he said at all. He stated that he did not think that the city should withhold tourism funding from the chamber, which is completely a different thing. It appears to me that whoever wrote the minutes was trying to make it sound like some poor soul on the chamber's payroll was at risk of not getting paid. That's a total fabrication, nothing less. Steve also stated that he understood the points I was making and felt the city needed to look into matters further. The minutes don't reflect that. Phil acknowledged he understood two topics I brought up to the council and even suggested that the city, that the city should take some responsibility for the problems. That's not in the minutes. These minutes are extremely biased, totally unprofessional and out of order, and they are prime examples of the city struggling to avoid letting the public know what is really going on regarding the lack of accountability.
Your time is up.
Well, we'll finish it later.
That's good, finish it later.
We don't appreciate the remarks you've already made.
Well, I'm sure you don't.
We don't motion now.
I don't appreciate the remarks you made.
Next step is out. We don't have a public meeting scheduled tonight, but we do need approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. And I have one amended amendment to make on the title of council business, item number one. It's not retention pay, it is incentive, hiring incentive. The question is to hiring incentive. That matches the intent of the council's work. Everybody has made that amendment. We have a motion standing to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended and the consent agenda for this council session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We don't have a presentation tonight, we'll go to department reports and move again, but our police chief, Jay Unleger.
Okay, additional officers were presented to two entry levels and they're accepted. Right now, I'm just waiting for the academy to give them a date. So they're gonna try to get as, in as soon as possible, put them both in the same class. They said the latest would be, be April, but I'm hoping sooner. The last time we went through this, where we're looking at three months out, they turned around and said, you got three weeks to get them here. So, I've got my fingers crossed there. Also, I'd like, I'm very happy to announce that I am doing the background investigation for a lateral officer that's applied for the department. He is an officer that has been about 18 years of experience and all of it's been in Clickcat County law enforcement areas. Interviews, we've got seven people for the administrative assistants. We're gonna be doing interviews tomorrow for that position. And our body cameras have arrived, so after I get through all these hiring processes and stuff, I will start on policies and procedures to implement that program for body cameras. Due to the multiple hirings and stuff and everything that's been going on at the office, I don't have the 2023 broke down of 3,200 and some cases, and I'm getting to that, okay?
Thank you.
So, but on that note, so far, about, since about 5 o'clock tonight, we're at 112 cases and we're 17 days in, so on an average, it's about seven or eight calls a day, so that's not bad, but we're still busy. So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thanks, Joe. Our fire chief said he was gonna be tied up this evening, and we'll go to our city administrator and director of public works that morning.
Yeah, so the public works and wastewater departments are just performing this time of year routine maintenance and keep getting ready for next year. Some other things we have going on is the ASR program, which is aquifer storage and recovery project. So you guys understand, do you understand what that actually entails and how that works? So when you, when the cities have been declining, particularly during peak season come July, August, September, declining static levels inside the wells, so, which hurts yield of the well capacity. So what this does is, the goal is, right now, we're just gonna be moving towards a pilot test to determine, what is the name of that, what is the name of that well?
Assi?
No, it's Dingman?
Dingman well.
Dingman well. Appears to be a very confining aquifer. So during off-season in the winter months, the city will get probably somewhere between additional 200 to 400 acre feet of water rate. It's what's called a non-additive water rate. We'll take that money and divert it into that, down that well casing and kind of it's like water fracking and force it back in there. And then that'll sit till peak demand season when we need that water, and then we will pump that back out and put it back into the system. So it kind of works like a giant underground reservoir that contain that water till we need it, and it improves the production of that well, so we can help meet the demand during those periods. So our goal is only like a four or five month period, five months at the most, is to have enough water during peak season to meet those peak hour demands and daily demands of the water. So hopefully I can, in a short, explain that fairly well to you. So also, we're starting on the design of the remaining AC and steel pipe replacements, which we applied for and received that loan for from Public Works Trust Fund. That is started, and we're also working on, we've got to get a SAW account set up and an Eagle account throughout the year, the shoreline management plan we were doing. There was no seminals made on that. That was something I was unaware of, and the wastewater treatment plant grant, there was no seminals made on that as well. So we need to get those accounts set up really quickly and get them all the information so we can get reimbursement by the end of the month, or get that process started by the end of the month. So that's eating up a lot of our time, trying to gather all that information and getting it in. Other than that, just a lot of more routine stuff going on. I know the building department, this is more on the code enforcement side, has been working with some property owners on what he feels is right now, I don't want to say danger structure, but we, we got a, he got a complaint from a tenant who was concerned about some electrical work in the house and everything. So he's working with that person and the property owner to gain access to the house and perform an inspection, and then he'll make a call at that time, and we'll keep the council informed as the outcome of that.
Do you have a question, Chief?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Pat?
Oh, just one more thing. So the mayor and I, on the ASR, I should have brought up when we were talking about, we had a meeting with Department of Ecology this morning. They are looking at giving us an additional $200,000 in funding to start the ASR planning process that we need to go through. And then we, they also talked about next biennium, which, is that June or July, you know?
Next biennium starts July 1st.
So in July 1st, they're gonna try to find some additional funding to give to the city for the pilot test as well, for the ASR.
I think we should all mark in our minds that as we've been asked for water outside of the city limits and been told that there's plenty of water, it's no issue that now we're spending, and getting money, it's great fact that the money comes from the ecology, hundreds of thousands of dollars to start pumping water underground into wells so we can draw it out later to meet our water supply demands. So next time, we have requests, we'll think hard about what our actual water supply is.
Any other questions or comments for Pat? That completes our department reports. We'll go to council business, then we'll ask Pat to present the document on the MOA for hiring incentive program.
So, several months ago, Jay came back to requesting the NI, requesting to raise the incentive pay from $10,000 to $15,000. The council was tentatively in agreement on that, so we're bringing that back forth to you. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, just, we were wanting that increase just to, more just to compete, and that's as the numbers fit, so I put in for that request, and luckily we did draw attention. Still on the PST website, there's still over 200 agencies in the state of Washington still advertising for cops. So we're, the whole state's down about five, a little over 500 officers statewide.
This is not, basically, there's no difference between this, the previous MOA that you agreed to and this MOA as far as language other than the dollar amount. But approval this night will not completely ratify this, this would still need to go to the union.
Any other comments or questions for Pat?
My only thought on that is that when we increased it, it would be good to have to extend it out, so, you know, higher on, get an incentive. When you're in, as it's planned here, you get an incentive, and then maybe another year out, the rest of the incentive is added, so maybe it's $5,000, $5,000, $5,000 over two-year periods. Those are my thoughts on when we first discussed it. I don't know how that would impact hiring.
I, I can't say how that impacted, but. Right now, the way it's written up was the 75th day first paycheck and then paid a completion appointment, and that would be after the probationary period of even a pet or lateral.
How long is the probation period?
Well, it depends on the year's experience, you know, the one we're looking at is 18 years of experience. Normally, a new entry level will be on a, must return it out there, probation for a year, but with an officer that's certified in Washington, all, all his career and stuff, it could be anywhere from three to six months. But we're talking a very experienced officer, a well-trained officer. So if this one is gonna be, as soon as we get him onboard, because he's got to pass the prerequisites, just like anybody else, we'll be able to put him to work immediately because he knows their, you know, the laws. The only thing he's gonna have to adjust to is Goldendale Police Department's policy and procedures versus his other agency.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion for a memorandum of agreement?
I move to approve the MOA for lateral police officers, increase the hiring incentive pay from $10,000 to $15,000. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOA for lateral police officer increase, increase the hiring incentive pay from $10,000 to $15,000. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. The next item on council business is the job description for building official slash code enforcement slash city planner, and Pat will present that as well.
Yeah, this was probably a month and a half or so ago where we brought this forth to council about creating exempt position and that did all three of these duties as needed. This was a combined job description, so it was kind of difficult to put it together and get it all, and try to keep it short enough where it wasn't a book, but. And the intent is this will be an exempt position, not a union position, and it will replace the previous or the current position and be put out to advertisement for interested parties.
Any comments or questions, James?
Just to clarify, this didn't go back up to the ordinance committee again, right? This hasn't been talked about, about the ordinance committee?
Well, was it the ordinance committee we talked to about previous time, was that public works committee? And, and yeah, it did go to them?
Oh, it did? I guess I did, I missed it somehow.
Further comments or questions? We'll call for a vote, all in favor?
We have a motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was just.
I move to approve the new position and authorize the administration to proceed with hiring procedures. In addition, upon filling the new position, the current building official job will be eliminated. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the new position and authorize the administration to proceed with hiring procedures. In addition, upon filling the new position of the current building critical job, of the building official, that job will be eliminated, the current job description. If there are any other comments or questions, otherwise we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. That concludes our council business. We'll go now to report of officers, and we will hear first from Steve.
Nothing tonight, I'm regaining myself.
David Jones.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I always just wanted to compliment Goldendale Police Department. You know, last week, there was an incident in the parking lot of the store, and there was a woman that was suffering some mental health problems, and, you know, the officer that responded was just professional and great at deescalating the situation. She was, you know, out of control and the language that she was using, I really compliment him on, on his restraint, and he was able to get her settled down, and it was really impressive, you know? That could have been a lot worse, and ambulance had to come, she needed some medical help, and, you know, she was having a bad mental problem, and he just did a really great job, and I can't remember his name, but I'll tell you who it is later.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will pass it on. Lauren. Kevin. Andy.
So I don't know how we go about this, was prior for Pat. I think that our council needs to have a refresher course on Robert's rules of order, and also maybe just a refresher course on new council member training type of a class maybe for all of us.
Okay.
I think we all need to stick to the rules a little bit better and maybe say things better than what we have in the past. I'll just say that.
And AWC normally does that training and is very thorough and help.
That's all I got?
That's good, that's a good suggestion.
Well, speaking of AWC, the mayor and I and whoever else on the council, there's a legislative session next month, and the mayor and I are planning to attend, and, and one thing we're gonna be watching is the, which many other issues, is the observatory. Again, we want to get the funding for the, for the ramp on the observatory, and we're gonna be watching that very closely, and hopefully the legislature will approve the funds for that, so, anyway, that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you. On the mayor's side, I think, more than anything, I think I really appreciate Andy's efforts on getting AWC training. That's a normal thing for a newly elected council member and mayor to go to that, and it's, it's kind of a one-time thing, but I, when we were, I think all, all of the new members came during the COVID pandemic, and I don't think they were all big except possibly by Zoom. Now, we can have it done here, if it's difficult to get away from, or you'll be able to go to a standing meeting, but it's a very, very good meeting. Ann McFarland is the, kind of the main organizer of that, tremendous experience and very, very helpful, and it'll help us all. The next item is open public comment, and it's three minutes to explain anything that you want, any type, not, not just what we heard under the public comment on the agenda, but anything at all. Go ahead.
And name and address.
Oh, gosh.
Or name and Goldendale.
All right, I know that part. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Lenore. I'm the president of Goldendale Motorsports. I reside here in Goldendale, as I have all my life. And I feel we have a matter that needs to be brought up. At the last city council meeting, Dennis Schroder made a presentation about the greater Goldendale Chamber of Commerce and their past lack of accountability regarding tourism funds. As Dennis was giving his presentation, a city council and tourism meeting, I'm sorry, tourism committee member spoke up and began comparing the chamber's activities and duties to those of the Goldendale Motorsports Association. I'm standing here trying to explain that this evening, to let you know, Mr. Schroder's inquiries and findings and opinions are his as a private citizen. They have absolutely nothing to do with the Goldendale Motorsports Association. So unfortunately now, it seems as though possibly the, some of the people on the tourism committee may not be able to make the distinction between the two, and possibly show an bias against GMA stemming from Dennis's association with our club. Here are just two examples that support this theory. This year, GMA had almost $3,400 held back from our funding request for our two car shows, which are on their 23rd and 24th years of being well-proven successes. One applying club is trying to hold an unproven first-time event, and they were given all but $2,000 of what they requested. Also, even after it was brought to the tourism funding committee's attention that the chamber has not even been spending all of their funding that they've been allocated, which totals almost $60,000 over a five-year period, the chamber continues to get the lion's share of the tourism funding available, and we get our modest amount applied for cut. And I'm sorry, this just doesn't seem right to me.
And I'm sorry, this just doesn't seem right to me. And I'd also would appreciate the council considering this before approving this year's funding. And I should also mention that the article in the Sentinel regarding the January 3rd council meeting stated Dennis Schroder of Goldendale Motorsports Association, anyway, the Sentinel, as well as their reporter Roger Nichols, have both been notified that there was no connection between GMA and Mr. Schroder's presentation, and that I would appreciate a correction or redaction of that statement. And they seem, I don't know what they'll do about it, but they were notified, and I thank you guys for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other on the line, Roger?
Yes, thank you. I was contacted by the gentleman, and I apologize for making the assumption that Dennis was representing the Motorsports Association. Having worked for many years in providing the sound for the show and shine, I assumed he was still acting as president. My sincere apologies. I've spoken to Lou about it. It's up to him. It's not my favor, but again, I really want to apologize to that for making the assumption I should not have.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. Always. Any other public comments?
Well, I believe we left off was.
Name and.
No, I'm sorry. Dennis Schroder, 363 Rimrock Road in Goldendale. And I believe we left off me giving my opinion on what I thought about the extremely biased Minutes. I feel that it's a prime example of the city struggling to avoid letting the public know what is really going on regarding the lack of accountability of tourism funding by the Chamber of Commerce. To me, this is a clear case of the city doing their best to avoid taking responsibility for this debacle. You should go back and correct the Minutes and try telling the whole truth, and don't forget, this meeting is on YouTube for an whole country to see. I understand why the city does not want to go over back records from the chamber for three years, as your contract stipulates that you have the right to do. Judging from your interpretation of the Minutes from the last meeting, council meeting, you're having trouble figuring out what took place only two weeks ago. I thought of, the thought of having to look back for three years ago must be an absolute nightmare for you.
I'm not even allowed to correct. Any other public comment? Public comment is not ever intended to accuse staff or anything of this nature. We're happy to work on the problem and make sure we can explain it, but your words and accusations were really unfounded and wrong. It doesn't help us at all when we have that kind of cooperation. That's my public comment, I guess. Only other item now is the, oh, no, I'm sorry, city planner. Did you need, did you have anything else on city planning that you wanted? Because you're on that list as well.
No.
Okay. Then we'll go to adjournment. Yes, Steve.
For Pat, Public Works Committee meeting?
Yep.
Tomorrow?
Three o'clock? Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
I, I think I have to go to Portland, take my friend down to Portland tomorrow afternoon, so it won't work for me. You can go ahead. It may be canceled, but then I doubt if I'll be able to make it tomorrow. How about Thursday?
Can you agree with what's for me? Lauren?
What time on Thursday?
Well, what works? I'll flex on Thursday.
Anything after two.
After two? Three o'clock Thursday?
Okay. Yeah, that works for me.
Thursday, right?
1:30?
What are we doing now?
Three o'clock.
All right.
Thursday.
Thursday. Three.
Two days from now.
The nineteen. Thank you.
Walk in calendar. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn City Council for January 17, 2023. All in favor?
Thirty-five minutes.